Planning Board Meeting Thursday, November 2nd, 2023. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on March 31st, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristiano?
Present.
Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhaus has been excused. Council Engager has been excused. Mr. Mercer?
Here.
Ms. Pike?
Here.
And Chairman Bava?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and amold in silence for troops serving foreign abroad?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any minutes?
I have no minutes this evening.
Any vouchers?
I have no vouchers this evening.
So next up, I guess, is the ordinance reviews?
Yeah, before we get to that, just I did leave a list of draft meeting dates for next year for everybody. If you could please take them with you, but I think I've also emailed them to you and look at them and see if there's any conflicts. Maybe we can discuss them at our December meeting to get ready for the re-ord meeting.
Sounds good.
And then we have eight ordinances that the council introduced. They're up for public hearing and adoption at their November 28th council meeting, which is before our next meeting, so we need to comment on them this evening.
I'm ready. So, Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to start?
Yes.
Ordinance number 23-35 is an ordinance of the Township of Howell supplementing Chapter 188, Article 10, Zones, Adding New Section 188-77.1 Entitled Highway Development 1 South. This is creating a new zone from Lanes Mill Road South on Route 9, directly coming out of our reexamine. It's actually bullet number one of our recommendation on page 79. It is 100% consistent with the master plan, which is what you're opine, what you're here to determine. They're gonna have a public hearing on when? November 28th?
28th.
But it's 100% consistent with the master plan, so I would respectfully request that the board opine that it is consistent with the master plan, because it comes directly out of the recommendations.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I think we take them one at a time.
That's what I was just gonna ask.
If the board wants to vote on that one?
Sure. If anybody doesn't, anybody have any comments on it, or then I'll accept a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
But some motion to that is substantially consistent with the master plan?
Right. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is ordinance 23-36. So in our, in our various ordinance, there's a section that enumerates all the different zones. So this ordinance adds that zone to the list. So again, it is substantially consistent with our master recommendation.
Okay.
I'll make motion that's, yeah, with the master plan.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next ordinance actually rezones lots from the HD Zone to the HD 1S Zone.
Right.
Again, 100% consistent with the master plan.
Entertainer motion?
Which one is that?
It basically takes the lots and rezones them from HD 1 to HD 1S in this.
Where?
It's Route 9 from Lanes Mill South. It's same thing. Yep, yep, there's multiple parts, parts of it, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So next ordinance, 23-38, it talks about the Victory Road area, which I know there's been some confusion over. This ordinance recommends rezoning that SED section of that area from SED to SED 1, which would make warehousing, flex space, et cetera, a conditional use in the zone. That is 100% consistent with the master plan, page 80, bullet number five. So I would submit to the board, it is consistent with the master plan. I know there's been some concerns about it, but that's an issue for the council at their public hearing. Here, it is 100% consistent with the master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bean?
Yes.
I'm just, this is the one I'm a little confused on.
Understand.
Okay, if the master plan re-examining, you weren't here.
I understand that, yes.
Your colleague was here and she was recommending removing warehousing from Victory Road.
So warehousing is no longer going to be permitted as a permitted use in Victory, in that area. It will be a conditional use with certain conditions. And then if they didn't comply with those conditions, it will be a use variance. Similarly, it had a flex space to that area and made that a conditional use, and if you didn't comply with the conditions, that would be a use variance. It has no impact on any pending application. I want to be very clear. Anything that's currently complete and before you, this has no impact. We could zone in open space preservation, it doesn't matter. They're regulated under the zoning that was in place at the time that they were deemed complete. However, moving forward, it is a conditional use. It goes to become a use variance, which is a heavier burden, and from warehousing and flex space. That's what the master plan recommends.
But your colleague said that you guys recommended all the lots on there that rezoned and they are.
That's not true.
That's not what she said.
No. It basically says, look at, the way, what the recommendation says is, look at rezoning that area, which the governing body did. It doesn't specifically say to ARI 6. The entire, the intent always, in my humble opinion, was SED 1, because you do have other uses in that area that are not residential. So you can't just take a bunch of lots and make them ARI 6 when they're not residential. So that, the intention was to make it to SED 1, which takes warehousing not permitted, make it conditional, with a whole host of conditions, as well as introduce flex into that, which, with a whole host of conditions.
So Jen, hypothetically.
But it's, but it's consistent with what we recommend. Go ahead.
Hypothetically speaking, if there was an application currently and this ordinance was to pass?
Doesn't matter.
Hear me out.
Yep.
If they were to change from warehousing to flex space, is that a new application that they would have to withdraw and submit new, or is it amended application?
It, so depending on how the outcome happens?
Yeah.
Right?
Correct.
If, if you guys come to a decision, whatever that decision may be, it, it would be a new application. If you guys have no decision, it could be an amended application.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
But regardless, it's consistent with our master plan.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
No.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next one, ordinance 23-39, it, we're gonna shift a little bit, which we created the new zone, well, they haven't yet, but the ordinance that creates that HD 1S, the south of Lanes Mill Road, this ordinance creates some new uses, this is a definition of the new uses that are created in that zone. Banquet, expedition facilities, also creates a new definition of flex. So yes, it is, it is consistent with our master plan, because when we make these new changes, we have to redefine everything. So yes, it is, it is consistent with our master plan.
I'll make motion that it's consistent with the master plan.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next ordinance, 23-40, so when we discussed introducing flex, it's as a conditional use. This ordinance creates the conditions that would be the conditional use. So yes, it is absolutely condition, it is consistent with our master plan, page 79, bullets two and three, which talk about making it a conditional use, where it's conditional, and the, and we even have the list of items that we recommend to be included. It is 100% consistent with the master plan.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Who was that that second? Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, almost done. Ordinance 23-41, that is adding the flex space as a conditional use in the SED 1 and the SED 2 zones, which is directly consistent with bullet two on page 79 of the master plan. So yes, it is consistent with the master plan.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Last one, 23-42. So we created this new zone, the HD 1S, which is along Route 9 from Lanes Mill South. We had to add it to our bulk table and create bulk standards. This ordinance creates those standards, which are consistent with what is allowed elsewhere, with the exception of office buildings. The height of office buildings would be a little taller, but it is, other than that, is consistent with everything else on the HD 1 Zone, but we did call this out specifically, and it is consistent with the master plan.
I'll make motion.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm done.
Thank you, Jen. All right. First up, resolution, case number SP 1117, D.R. Horton, Inc., resolution granting submission waivers, eligible voters, Cristiano, Huzar, Leggio, Mercer, Pike, and myself. I'll make a motion to memorialize.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay. Next up, submission waivers, case number SD 3013, Bezador LLC, preliminary major subdivision.
Good evening, everyone. John Lowenberg from Park McKay on behalf of applicant Bezador LLC for an application for preliminary major subdivision, seeking to subdivide the existing tract of seven different, different lots, my apologies.
Excuse me, can you just spell your last name for me?
Oh, no problem. Lowenberg, L-O-W-E-N-B-R-G.
Perfect, thank you.
So, Mr. Lowenberg, typically, the way we handle these is, once you enter your appearance, our board engineer will go through the requested submission waivers and make a recommendation. If you have any comments regarding those recommendations, you're certainly welcome, but she'll, she'll take it. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have an October 12th, 2023 review letter. The submission waivers are specifically outlined in item three of that report. Some of the items, like name, address, phone number, I take no exception of the granting of that for the purposes of complete, but it should be provided on a subsequent plan revision. And I do recommend that checklist item number 60, the 2,000-foot downstream drainage analysis, be supplied, and so I don't support the granting of that waiver. The balance of the items, I do support waiving, but that, I do request item 60 be provided.
And we can do that.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Entertainer motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
A motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Have a good night. I'm switching a couple things up tonight. First, we're gonna hear case number SD 3002, Frederick J. Hare, an extension of time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Jackson on behalf of Frederick Hare, who's here this evening with his family. This was a subdivision that was granted, resolution adopted September 15th, 2022, under 4055-D47, a minor subdivision. There is 190 days within which to perfect it. The board may grant an extension based on outside agency approval delays. My client applied for a wetlands LOI through the NJDEP. We received that on, in the end of August, and we filed the deed, or we recorded on September 12th, 2023. I spoke with Mr. Kevin Shelley, oh, once he got this, Mr. Shelley provided me with meets and bounds descriptions for two conservation easements that I have to incorporate into a deed. The bottom line is, we'd ask for an extension commensurate with the amount of time that it took the DEP to get us the LOI. We expect to perfect the subdivision in much shorter order than that, but it was, you know, from September to this September, so we would ask for a 300, you know, one-year extension.
A year?
Yeah, one year. That would run from, well, we'd only get 180 days. We'd get a, right, we'd get 180 days from today, actually.
Right.
190, I'm sorry, 190.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You're welcome. Have a good night. Next up, case number SP 1118, CR Township of Howell, capital review.
Sergeant Dave Levine with the Howell Township Police Department. We're here to present to the board the high-level overview of the Public Safety Radio Communication Project. To my right here, we have Rich Turujin, who is the Township's counsel on the project. Glenn Lees, who's the police department's IT expert and radio expert. And on my left here, we have Nick Mascatelli from Motorola Solutions, and Nick Panetta, who is also with Motorola Solutions. And Nick's gonna present the.
You guys sit down. There's speakers.
Those are, those are microphones on the desk.
We were better standing.
Can you just make sure that mic is on, just type. Okay, you have to speak, because I didn't catch any of those names, and you're gonna have to spell them all for me, anyway.
No problem. You want me to spell my name?
Please.
Nicholas Mascatelli, M-A-S-C-I-T-E-L-L-I.
Perfect. And you're with Motorola, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And my name is Nicholas Panetta, P-A-N-E-T-T-A.
Perfect.
And I'm also with Motorola.
Thank you.
David Levine, it's L-E-V-I-N-E, with the Howell Township Police Department.
I got that.
Glenn Lees, it's G-L-E-N-N, last name is L-E-E-S.
Perfect.
Richard Turujin, T-O-U-R-O-O-N-J-I-A-N, and I'm with Allegiant Wireless.
Good evening, everyone. Making sure it works. Yep. In order to provide reliable emergency radio communications to the Howell Township first responders, Howell Township leaders approved funding in 2022 to upgrade mission-critical infrastructure, which requires work at four critical infrastructure radio tower sites. The public safety radio system consists of two major subsystems, including a new VHF paging simulcast system for the Howell Fire Department, and the expansion of the 700 megahertz New Jersey Public Safety Interoperability System site at Aldrich Park and Ride. The four existing sites impacted include the radio towers at Preventorium Road, Aldrich Park and Ride, Virginia Drive, and Adelphia Fire Station Number Two. All four sites will be connected by Ethernet backhaul to provide redundancy and will provide improved coverage for the paging system in Howell Township and the fire services, or for the Howell Township for their fire services. The NGIC system, which is the New Jersey Interoperability Communication System, will be located at Aldrich Park and Ride on the existing tower there. The site will improve emergency responder radio coverage to the Howell Township Police Department, fire districts, EMS, and OEM agencies, and will also improve interoperability with Howell Township mutual aid partners. First respond, oh, I'm sorry. All work performed on these radio sites will be greatly benefit our first responders to communicate quickly, more efficiently, and provide a higher level of safety as, as they protect and serve the public. This communication system project will have a direct impact on the quality of service provided to the residents of Howell Township. And that's all I have. I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is what's considered a Section 31 review, so it's really just a review and recommendation by the board. Obviously, I think this is a much-needed upgrade. It serves for emergency purposes. I had drafted a report. I'll just ask a couple of questions. Do you have any grading that's gonna be necessary for any of this work, or?
There will be, oh, sorry. Yes, there will be some grading performed.
Okay, but it won't alter any drainage patterns?
Oh, no, nope, none at all.
And do you need any parking for technicians, or that's provided already on-site, or it's not necessary?
On-site.
On-site.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I really, I had the opportunity to review it. I have no issues with the application. Again, the specific sites were the Howell Township Police Department, the Howell Fire Department, the Aldrich Road Park and Ride, and the water tank on Virginia Drive.
So, Mr. Chair, there's not a approval or denial, but the board can just vote that it has received the application and it has no comments, or the board can vote, you know, and incorporate some comments to the governing body if it wishes.
Get it done.
I'm happy to see an upgrade to one of the already existing best police departments in the world. So it's a, just a motion to the governing body that the application has been reviewed and the board has no additional comments.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion in a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
No, I didn't.
I don't think your mic is on, Paul.
Yeah, I just put it back on. Next up, case number SP 1105, AAVR-HW Property LLC, Victory Road.
Ron, I'm recusing myself from this application. I'm just gonna sit here.
Well, you have to step off the dais.
You're gonna recuse yourself.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chair, as our custom is with this case, just by way of housekeeping, we'll begin by all council entering their appearance, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, board professionals, Rob Simons and Harold Law, here on behalf of the applicant.
And good evening. My name is Stuart Lieberman.
I'm from the firm, Lieberman, Blacker and Sinkovich, and I represent Marjana Sarcelli, S-C-A-R-S-E-L-I-I, Chris Bates, Justin Gumley, G-U-M-L-E-B-Y, Diane Lindstrom, L-I-N-D-S-T-R-O-M-U-M, Francis Santore, S-A-N-T-O-R-E, Betty Velez, V-E-L-E-Z, Edwin Woolley, W-O-L-E-Y, Marie Woolley, Mary Ann, and Robert Wagner.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And, Mr. Lieberman, we did receive your associate's letter, and, of course, you'll have an opportunity to make closing statements when that time comes.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, Mr. Coachero, and members of the board, so I think where we left off was that we were in the middle or toward the tail end of comments from members of the public. Since then, we submitted to the board a few additional exhibits, engineering exhibits, that were commented on in Ms. Newman's, I believe, October 27, 2023 memo, and part of those comments asked for a oral summary and presentation of what we most recently submitted, particularly with regard to buoyancy calculations. So with that, I would ask, I think, to be appropriate at this time procedurally, is to have Mr. Tongto Lam present and just provide a little bit of testimony with regard to those recent submissions.
Okay, Mr. Lam, I remind you, you remain under oath. If you could just state and spell your name for the record.
First name is Tongto, T-U-N-G-T-O, last name Lam, L-A-M.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Lam, good evening. You are in receipt of the CME report, most recently dated October 27, 2023, correct?
Yes.
And as part of that report, it is requested that the applicant discuss a particular issue, namely, a summary of the most recent submitted documents related to the discussion at the previous hearing regarding the potential for stormwater pipe flotation within the groundwater table, discuss any changes made to the plans, as well as the results of the calculations provided. You see that on page three of Ms. Newman's report?
Yes.
And that particularly references certain documents that you submitted to the board of your office, Boler Engineering, submitted to the board that have been marked A-54 through A-57 for purposes of this application, correct?
Yes.
So, in compliance with Ms. Newman's or CME's October 27, 2023 memo, can you please go over those submissions, and particularly referencing A-54 through A-57, and by starting off explaining what the purpose was of those submissions?
Yes, based on the last planning board meeting, those discussions about pipe buoyancy, about the seasonal high groundwater table and things of that nature, so in summary, we submitted a cover letter dated October 20th.
Can I just ask, can you guys hear him? Tom, can you bring it closer to you, or... and speak right into it?
Because I can barely hear you when I'm right here.
Sorry? Referring to the October 20th, 2023 letter, is this better?
Yeah.
Sorry. It's a cover letter that summarizes what we submitted. Second document was the technical notes from ADS Pipe, which is a pipe manufacturer for HTP pipe. And then another document was the example calculation prepared by our office for a 30-inch HTP pipe. And then the last document was just the drainage plan for reference that was submitted. Basically, in summary, we went through calculation for pipes in diameter of 10 inches and all the way up to 30 inches, which is the largest pipe we have on the project. We have calculated minimum pipe cover to prevent flotation, assuming the water was at the top of the surface of the grades. So for a 10-inch pipe, you need seven inches of cover, and all the way down to a 30-inch pipe, you need 22 inches cover. And then we also provided a summary table noting the covers we have provided on the project, and we exceed all of the minimum pipe cover required from pipe flotation, and there is no changes to the plan.
So, based on your submission of those exhibits, is it your conclusion that the applicant's stormwater management design and plan continues to fully comply with all applicable ordinances and regulations?
Yes.
And with regard to some additional documentation that was received by the board most recently, particularly, there's a memo from the Monmouth County Board of Health dated October 31, 2023, with regard to the site plan, and there's certain comments with regarding the septic disposal field and the location of landscaping, and the need to submit new septic plans in accordance with those comments. Do you have any objection with any of those comments issued by the Board of Health set forth in B-43?
No, those are standard requirements from Board of Health.
And the applicant will fully comply with those comments?
Absolutely.
And with regard to CME's October 27, 2023 report that you reviewed, you've had an opportunity to review the report?
Yes.
Okay, and you've also had an opportunity to review all of the technical engineering review comments in the back of the report?
Correct.
And what is the applicant's position with regard to the contents of the October 27, 2023 report, including the technical engineering comments?
We'll address those as a condition of approval.
So, the applicant has no objection to complying fully with all comments, requirements set forth in the CME associate's review letter dated October 27, 2023, correct?
Correct. The only thing we would like to note is under the technical section, under C2, the required information, we would just like to provide those at the time of construction, because that's when they'll be available. So we just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Any other aspect of the report that you desire to add clarity to, in terms of how the applicant is going to comply?
I think they're pretty clear. We'll address those.
And again, upon full compliance with the exception noted to the October 27, 2023 memo from CME, do you believe that the applicant will, continues to, and will fully comply with all applicable ordinances and regulations pertaining to engineering, particularly with regard to the stormwater management plan?
Yes.
I have no further questions for this witness. Mr. Chair?
Oh, good. Thank you. Stuart Lieberman for the residents. Sir, I just have one question for you, and that is, the letter from the Department of Health you characterized as being standard, right? Standard and normal, isn't that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. That letter indicated that the Board of Health had a question about the location of the septic field as it related to one of the stormwater management devices. Wasn't that in the letter?
That's the first comment.
Right. And so, that's not standard, right? That was a very particular question about whether or not the system was compliant, because there was a suggestion that the bed might be too close to one of the stormwater features. Isn't that accurate?
No, 50 feet is the standard DEP requirement. I think Board of Health was just pointing that out as a requirement.
You think that's all they were doing? They didn't ask you to provide further information in detail in that letter?
It says that plans needs to be submitted.
Thank you. Nothing further. Thank you.
And just for redirect, Mr. Lam, the applicant will comply so that the septic disposal field will be a minimum of 50 feet from the infiltration basin, correct?
Correct.
That's...
Okay. Any questions?
Hey, council, does that now complete your affirmative case?
Other than summation, yes.
Okay. Mr. Lieberman, your associate had rested her case at the last hearing, but just, do you have anyone else you would... any other experts or witnesses you seek to present?
No, thank you for your courtesy. We look forward to the community continuing their closing arguments, and then the council doing so. But thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I would recommend we reopen it to the public.
Laura, is it typical to have an application submit without the septic location on the map for our review? Because this one doesn't show it, and it's not prepared, correct? I mean, there's no map that shows the location of the septic field.
I mean, it'd have to be compliant. I would defer... that's a question for their engineer to answer, as to why it's not shown on the plan, and what the location was intended to be. They had to do soil logs in an area to submit to the Board of Health.
Yeah, so as of now, I mean, do you know where this is going to be? And there's no maps prepared thus far that have that location, correct?
Correct.
Which was the same question we raised at the last hearing.
It was brought on by the public, but I'm just wondering why.
It's just being designed by a separate consultant. Board of Health has indicated in the past that they need to wait for the planning board approval before reviewing the application, so it's just a matter of timing.
So you don't know where it is?
We know we have to be a certain distance away from certain things.
That's not what I asked you. You don't know where it is?
Exactly.
So how did you do borings in the location if you have no idea where it is? I think that's what Nick is asking, correct?
Correct.
So you did borings, correct?
You asked a question. Let's let the witness answer.
We have done preliminary borings to know that it will work, but the borings needs to be witnessed by the Board of Health.
Well, when you say you did preliminary borings, they would have been in the general area in which you were anticipating the location of...
Yeah, my spot.
The location, correct?
Sorry, I missed that question.
Well, if you did preliminary borings, they just wouldn't be randomly selected, the locations throughout the site. It would have been in the area that you anticipated the location of the septic.
So I think, in response, Mr. Lam, to comments from members of the board, from Ms. Beam, from Mr. Coachero, I want you to go back and just slowly be responsive to those comments with regard to questions pertaining to the septic field.
As a septic design, less than 2,000 gallons per day, is being designed by a separate consultant as graphically shown as our approximate location, but the detailed plans has not been prepared.
Wait, hold on. When you say it's being shown as a location, so Bowler submitted plans, correct?
Yes.
With regard to this application, and the plans, do they depict a location with regard to the septic field?
If we refer to sheet C-302 of the submitted site plan?
And that's entitled Site Layout Plan?
Site Layout Plan.
And if you can provide for the board's benefit the most recent revision date on that plan?
And the plan I have on my screen is March 22, 2023.
Do I have to go to the exhibits?
Exhibit. Which exhibit are you looking for?
I'm looking for the...
Page five, sheet five, the PDF.
Yeah, right there. If you could zoom in to the title block next to the revision numbers? Sorry, no, you have the sheet number, correct?
It's not that easy for me to just...
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Where am I going from here?
Just up, same sheet, but just slightly up, right there. Where the revision block is, there's a location reserved as a proposed septic field. And that is the box that's outlined, that's located behind the 50-foot... sorry, I set back.
For... just because, I mean, isn't that the same as this area that I had up on the original plan?
Yes, it's just not labeled on that plan.
Okay.
Is it the one that says prior septic field?
No.
It's like a rectangle where Laura's... So it says proposed septic field by others. It's shown in this area, but if I go to the overall plan, it's...
Oh, got it. My carrots, my eyes aren't working. What's the distance that from the building, just out of curiosity?
460 feet to the east of the building.
That's not gonna have to be raised up, but the water table issues water?
I don't have to find out. I'm not the one who's designing it.
Is that the area where the excess topsoil is being placed, at 28 inches of topsoil? Open questions, right?
Are you looking for a particular plan, Mr. Lam, to provide a response to the question?
Yeah, I'm looking for the prior exhibit.
Which exhibit?
Do you have the exhibit list?
Eileen, do you have the updated exhibit list for him to take a look at, so he can identify which exhibit he wants to take a look at?
I think it's A-53, topsoil exhibit.
Okay. You want A-53, the proposed topsoil exhibit?
Yes. Sorry, what was the question?
Is that the location... the proposed location, is that where the excess topsoil, or the proposed 28 inches of topsoil is gonna be placed, at the front end of the property there?
Yes.
So, that's why I'm asking you. I know the plan isn't done yet, but 28 inches of topsoil, right? Being built up, all this build coming in, look at it. You know, if you drive around town, you just see septic systems on residential houses that are in high-water table areas. The front of their lawns are a big mound with the four bowls sticking out, you know, so they could... they could construct them. So, you know, you get 28 inches of dirt underneath, how is that septic system gonna be efficient? If it's dug out, 28 inches underneath, filled with, you know, clean, inch and a half or whatever, three-inch bluestone, you know, tar, cover, I guess, you know, we just wanna understand that.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, almost 500 feet away, you know, you're talking, it's gotta be like this. So, I mean, how... I know, I agree with what he's saying, like, how high is this building gonna have to be now for you to go 500 feet? Because 500 feet, that system's gonna have to... and you have the soil up.
Yes. The finished...
But you don't have anything for us.
The finished floor of the building is not changing, and there can be a pump to pump to the distance. It doesn't have to flow by gravity to the septic field.
But what happens if there's three, four feet of water underneath the system pushing, you know, everything up? Is that gonna be, you know, that potential, you know, a health issue? The smell, or, you know, sitting water on the top, because it's not gonna... it's not gonna... it'll push through the rock, you know, through the top of it. It's, you know, without this finish, you know, that's why we're asking as far as...
I mean, we're asking is we don't have the plan. It's not complete. And being over 400 feet away, you're looking at being deeper into the ground, into the water table. That's what we're saying, yeah. Right? So I'm just kinda... And we don't have a plan to show us. Yeah. I understand you said somebody else is designing it, but we don't have the design.
Mr. Mercer, what are the issues over there with water?
I don't have to...
And getting the road...
Right.
The material out, refilling it, you know...
Yeah, it's concerning.
The reason why we haven't prepared the plans is the Health Department would not review the septic design until we have planning board approval, which is what they issued... Board of Health issued a letter previously indicating that. That's why we didn't proceed with the design.
And the proposed design that you're describing to the board with pressure system, that's fully compliant with the applicable regs under 7.49A, I believe, correct?
Yeah, it's the NGDEP requirement for septic design.
Laura and Jen, typically when applicants come, they have the septic design on their application, correct? I've seen it a million times here.
They typically show at least the field and the tentative design.
The story.
That design is to be approved by the Board of Health, correct, Mr. Lam?
Correct. The design is to be approved by Board of Health.
Mr. Chair, may I make, of course, examine the witness on that question?
Yes, we're on. Is that okay, right?
Well, the board, I would recommend the board finish its questions, and then you can open it to...
Sure. Yes, of course.
Cross again.
Thank you.
Nick, the boring they could talk about.
This isn't boring at all to me. This is very... I'm joking.
Just the way you said that that area was watered, to see if you could handle the septic there, or wasn't watered, to see if you could handle the septic there.
We have test pits nearby, test pit 304.
No, not nearby, in the septic area.
The septic area. Exact footprint now.
You're just putting us in a tough position here, you know, I don't...
No, you're not wrong. I mean, I'm just going back in history...
I mean, I'm just going back in history of the Planning Board, typically when an application comes, we see everything that Jen just mentioned, septic design, location, boring logs, test pit logs, everything, we review it, they review it, we don't have that here. I don't understand how we can actually approve an application, hypothetically speaking, without reviewing that. I just don't see it. I understand it's under the jurisdiction of the Monmouth County Board of Health, but every other application I've seen here, we've seen it.
Comes in front of us.
Just give the witness just a minute, because I believe that he's trying to locate particularly some test pits in the location of where the septic field is identified on his Plan Sheet A 3 and 2, C 3 and 2, excuse me.
Yeah, Rob, speak up please.
I'm just saying that the, that the witness is trying to be responsive to the question by just looking at a separate plan, that's all.
I'm referring to documents that hasn't been submitted as bore, there's prepared by another consultant, Collier. There are two additional test pits, test pit one and test pit two, done within the footprint of the septic. They're located 50 feet away from the basin in question, 50 feet from the property line. But this plan has not been submitted, so you do not have the benefit of what I'm looking at right now.
Mr. Chair, I object to the introduction of any testimony that hasn't been submitted, I haven't been able to show it to my experts, I wouldn't even know what to ask them about it.
I don't disagree, but I...
Which, I'm sorry, which evidence are you objecting to that has not been submitted?
There apparently was reference to a document that hasn't been submitted to the board that indicates that there was some boring tests taken. If I heard that correctly, my hearing isn't always right, but that's what I thought I heard, and if so, I object to it because I haven't had a chance to review it, my experts haven't had a chance to review, and I wouldn't know what to ask about it.
Mr. Chairman, if it hasn't been submitted to the board, the board doesn't have a proper foundation to even evaluate it, I would recommend that the board not...
Right.
Of course.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So, with regard to the septic plan and particularly the soil logs, and I believe that Nick referenced it, that, you know, certainly in terms of preemption, that the septic plan is subject to the approval of the Board of Health. And that, back as the client is reminding me, on October 14th of 2021, over, over two years ago, with regard to this particular project, that the Board of Health specifically stated that soil logs performed at the above referenced property, and this is dated from October 14th, 2021...
This is something that was previously submitted?
I believe so, but I will confirm that, Mr. Chair, of course. Soil logs performed at the above referenced property indicate that this site is suitable for the installation of a subsurface sewage disposal system.
I'm just gonna defer then to the December 2nd, 2022 letter that I have, which came after, which says the location of the septic disposal field has changed. New satisfactory soil logs must be performed within 15 feet of the boundary of the disposal field prior to approval of this application. Soil logs must be witnessed by this department. And there's no reference in the newer letter as to whether or not they've witnessed soil bores.
So, I just wanna be, I wanna make sure that I understand what's being presented. So, there is a conceptual location of the septic field that Mr. Lamb has identified on the plan. And is the testimony tonight that that is the location that you're in the process of seeking approval for, before the County Board of Health?
Yes.
All right, so there is a depiction of it on the plan, and it is awaiting outside agency approval?
Correct.
Okay.
Certainly, I'm, yeah, of course.
So is it, is it safe to say, in your professional opinion, two years ago, not in the exact area that the septic is going, you guys figured boring, and according to that letter, it was, you know, it would be okay to put the septic. But now here we are, we're gonna fast forward, and so maybe two years later, maybe two and a half years later, whatever it's gonna be, how do we know that conditions have not changed and, you know, getting closer to the road or getting, you know, 15 feet or 50 feet off the road, you know? You understand where our position is on this?
So, I think in response to questions from the board members, the board professionals, that in fairness, frankly, to both, both groups, so to speak, I think the appropriate thing to do, whether I like it or not, is that we will provide updated information to you, certainly with regard to the septic system, because you're asking for it. Irrespective of jurisdiction and preemption, there are questions that certainly we can answer, but it's not appropriate for the board to get the answers frankly on the fly, and so, and that's not appropriate, so we, I think, under the circumstances, again, as much as it pains me, is that we're gonna ask to carry this to a future meeting to provide that information. Because we have, we have the information, but we wanna provide it in the appropriate manner.
Let me ask you a question. You said, you just said right now, whether you like it or not. Like, we're asking you questions that you have no use for, or you're questioning our professionals that you have no use for. I don't like your tone.
That's, oh, hang on, that's not how I, no, that's, that's not how I took it.
That's how I took it, Chair.
No, I'm not...
That's ridiculous. Answer the questions that we're asking you, put the exhibit up.
Okay, hang on, hang on, that's what he's offering to do, he doesn't have it in front of us, in front of him, so how can he provide us with that information?
He doesn't have it today, Paul, but his tone with saying...
Tone what?
Whether I'd like to do it or not.
The only tone, the only tone I hear today is yours. Okay?
And I hear yours too, sir, okay?
All right, come on.
Look, continue, Mrs. Snyder.
So you're asking to carry so you can get that information?
Mr. Chair, may I respond to that, please?
Take a breath. So... Let me take a five-minute recess.
Mr. Chair, as long as I can be heard at some point, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
The board will now take a five-minute recess. The Planning Board will now reconvene.
Is that the December 22nd letter, I can't see it.
So...
Okay, yeah, that's December 22nd.
So, okay, you wanna carry, but he wanted to make a comment before, so...
Thank you, thank you very much for your courtesy, I appreciate it. We're fair frustrated, and I wanna explain to the board why, you know, every time we come here, my clients have to pay for me. And this thing should have been, I've never seen, and maybe you guys have, you know, you're on the board, but I've been, I've never seen an application before Planning Board that doesn't have at least minimal detail on a septic system. I can't understand how we're at this point where we've already had public comment, and now we still don't have information on the septic system. And my concern is, is that in December 2022, your engineer expressed, told them that they have to have that detail. It wasn't unknown, it wasn't hidden, we saw the letter, and they were advised they have to have that detail, and they have to present it to the board, and they didn't. And I just think that this is absolutely unfair to the public, and it's really unfair to the board. You can protect yourselves, you don't need me to protect you, and I appreciate that and respect it, but it's just not fair. I've never seen, I've never seen this before, maybe you have, but we're this far along? And, and I question, by the way, you know, they say they don't have a tenant, well, design of septic systems is based on the number of employees. I wonder how they even do that, but that's not my problem, thank God, you know? The point is this, it's unfair that we're in public comment, trying to, ready to do closings, and the septic system's in issue. And I just, I just don't think it's right, and I, you know, you, before, they always say, if you're going before the Planning Board, you have to have your ducks in a row, that's always the expression that people tend to kick around. There's a duck missing. Thank you very much.
Okay. So I do understand what you're saying, but however, the bottom line is, it is their application. So, you know...
Mr. Chair, I would add to that, that if you were to deny the application based on that lack of information, and the record shows that the applicant was willing to provide it, however late in the process, it's not gonna be viewed...
Favorably?
Favorably by, by a court. Where an applicant refuses to provide information that's relevant, that's a different issue.
Right.
And there's, there's case law on that. But for a permitted use where additional information is being requested, that the applicant is offering to submit, there's no case that you can rely on to, to deny that. Mr. Lieberman's very familiar with the body of case law in land use, I, I would think he would have cited one if he knew one also.
Right, right. Okay, so with that being said, I guess you have to speak to, I mean, I'm thinking...
We only have one meeting left this year, it's December 14th, and there are five applications...
Yeah, it's not getting heard then.
And we don't have dates for next year other than our reorg meeting.
Hang on, so...
The re, hold on, one minute. The reorg meeting's January 4th.
Now, are there applications on that, that day?
No.
So I guess...
I'm not gonna, is it January, did you say, sir?
Yeah, January 4th, our reorg.
I would just say, Mr. Chairman, I have, you know, I'm not a guy who would know what the board's gonna look like next year.
True, yeah.
So if you have new board members, in order for them to become eligible...
They have to watch.
And they're appointed at reorg for the township, they would have a couple days to watch all the videos or read the transcripts. You could, if you're gonna carry it, you need to carry it to reorg, even just for scheduling purposes.
Yeah.
We have not adopted a calendar.
So... We'll, we'll carry to the reorg, January 4th.
Yeah, we would ask... I think that's appropriate, we would ask that the matter be carried to the Board's reorganization meeting on, was it January 4th?
Yeah, January 4th.
2024, at 7 o'clock in this room. This location, no further notice being provided, with the understanding that that new date will purely be for scheduling purposes only to establish a new date on January 4th to continue the hearing.
Correct. Okay.
And I would need an extension of time, if you wanna put one on the record?
Yeah, and the applicant grants an extension of time, I guess, for now through the end of January of 2024, and once we establish the new date, obviously, we'll address that again.
Mr. Lieberman?
Yes, sir.
The board meets the first and third Thursdays of the month, so if you wanna take a look, you know, in 2024, and maybe provide, Eileen, and counsel, you know, dates that you know that you would be available.
All of January, I'm not available, I'm in Florida, I mean, I just know, I've been Florida in January, so if we could do it in February, we'd just be better.
Well, okay, so we understand your availability.
Yes, sir.
So, we'll, we'll look at that on January...
What about that January?
Mr. Lieberman, if you could just follow that up with a letter, so we have something.
I will, thank you.
Okay, so let me just make the formal announcement. Case SP-1105 of AAVRHW Property LLC will be carried for scheduling purposes only to the Board's January 4th, 2024 meeting, beginning 7 o'clock. It's a live meeting here in the main meeting room at Town Hall. Again, it'll be for scheduling purposes only, there will not be any arguments or testimony taken at that time. There'll also be no further notice to property owners. All documents are on file in the office of the Board Secretary, and are available for review and inspection during normal business hours. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Now, if we're gonna pay Mr. Lieberman's fees for incompetence and malfeasance?
When do we get a break?
Okay, next up, case number SD-3010, Samuel Niger. Have a good evening. Here, all set.
Ready to go?
Spark and roll.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals and public. My name is Jared Pape, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Heilberg Pape. Our firm represents the applicant, Samuel Niger. Before I begin, I'd like to ask that our notices that we provided are adequate to provide this board with jurisdiction.
That's the proof of services in order.
Cool.
Thank you. This is an application for minor subdivision approval with bulk variance relief for Block 18, Lots 8 and 15. The proposed subdivision is essentially a lot line adjustment between Lots 8 and Lot 15. And we'll pull up an exhibit later on the tax map, which very clearly shows the lot line adjustment. Lot 15 is in a regularly shaped lot, which contains an existing single-family home, a detached garage and a swimming pool. No improvements are being proposed to Lot 15. Lot 15 does contain some existing variance conditions for setbacks. No new variances are being proposed for Lot 15, and the existing variances are not being exacerbated. Lot 8 is vacant and undersized, and the proposed subdivision actually resulted in an increase, a slight increase in the lot area and frontage to Lot 8. But it will require bulk variance relief for a proposed single-family house, which we'll cover in more detail. Briefly, just some, there was a request from the, from CME's office for a history of the subdivision of these lots. We requested all prior resolutions adopted by the planning or zoning boards for these lots. No prior resolutions for subdivisions were, were found, so we, we didn't find any. We did look through our client's title searches for when they purchased the property. It looks like Lot 15 may have been part of a merger. I think at one point, the lots consisted of lots 13, 14, 15 and 16, but have been merged and are now just known as Lot 15. So, that's what we found when we searched for the history of the property, and I just wanted to put that on the record because there was a request for that information. This is, as I mentioned, there's variance relief being requested for an undersized lot. For that reason, we sent letters to the adjoining property owners, what we call the buy-sell letters, essentially inquiring whether the adjoining property owners either have an interest in purchasing our client's property or selling all or a portion of their land to our client in an effort to either reduce or mitigate the variances. So we sent those to all the adjoining property owners via certified mail and regular mail, and we did not receive any responses, so those...
Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in, I'm sorry, Jared, but like, the two lots exist, there's a sliver that goes out to Larrabee that's part of Lot 15 that they're giving to this Lot 8. It's still an undersized lot, which is why they're here, because the lot is undersized to begin with. It's gonna be made a little bit bigger, but not conforming, but there's a little sliver along the edge that goes up to Larrabee that... a little sliver along the edge that goes up to Larrabee that, it's this, yeah, she's getting there. So if you look on what she's saying, there's a little sliver there that belongs to lot fifteen that they're giving to lot eight. That's basically the crux of the entire application.
Oh, that's.
That's it.
That's it.
So they need a variance because the lot eight is undersized, it's getting better than it was before, it's still undersized, so they need a variance. Allison's here to talk about that, but at the end of the day, that's basically the crux of the application, right?
That's exactly right.
Thank you, Jen.
Well, with that, we have two witnesses. The applicant's professional engineer is Charles Surmonte. I'll ask him to just give a little bit of detail as to the lot conditions, and then Allison Coffin is the applicant's professional planner to provide the planning testimony. So unless there's any further questions or comments, I'll ask Mr. Surmonte to be sworn in.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Charles Surmonte, S U R M O N T E.
Mr. Pape, if you could just qualify, Mr. Surmonte?
Could you please provide your credentials for the board?
Certainly. I've been licensed professional engineer and land surveyor for about thirty years now, since nineteen ninety-two and nineteen ninety-three I've been licensed, and I've been in the business of subdivisions and site plan design since then, and I've appeared before most boards in Monmouth County. I've been here maybe a half a dozen times in the last ten, twelve years on similar applications.
Okay, yeah, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
I'll ask if you could just identify the property, and I don't want to belabor the point, but just point out the subdivision and essentially the strip of land that's being added to lot eight.
Yeah, the property that fronts on Larrabee is a fifty-foot lot, and again, the easterly, another sixteen feet to the east of that fifteen-foot lot to create a sixty-six by one fifty lot, ninety-nine hundred square feet. And again, nothing, no changes are proposed to the existing lot to the south. So we've developed a plan for that particular lot that we think that we're confident, except for some setback relief, that is definitely developable. We've done, we've done a soil investigation in the backyard, we've run a perm test, we've sized up the septic system for a proposed five-bedroom house, and we've been able to accomplish that within that ninety-nine hundred square foot lot. There are some comments regarding how to configure the driveway, which we've taken into consideration, and I think the applicant will modify the front entry to his house in order to accomplish what your board professionals have suggested to us, but that's pretty much it. It's, you know, it's doing the best we can with a ninety-nine hundred square foot lot.
Unless there's any questions from the board or board professionals, I know CME had issued a letter dated October twenty-fifth. Ms. Newman, if you have any questions that are unaddressed at this point?
I would just ask, this would be filed if the board acted affirmatively by MAP?
Yeah, I believe we've even prepared a flat and furnished it to you already.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing from me.
Just one question, how ironic, new septic disposal field.
Yes.
Is it the same size?
I'm sorry?
Same size as the existing, or is it different?
I'm honestly not familiar with the details of the existing septic field, I just know that the one that we proposed for the new home would be compliant.
Compatible to the size of the dwelling?
Yes, it's designed for a five-bedroom dwelling.
I don't believe there is existing on lot eight, correct?
Pardon?
Lot eight has no existing septic.
Mrs. Bean. I think you said, well, this is non-conforming, meaning it's not conforming to the square footage of the house, or just the whole?
The lot is a twenty thousand square foot zone.
No.
The lot is smaller, they're proposing to make it bigger, but if you say no, the non-conforming lot, that's gonna be like eight thousand something, right, Chad? What we're making?
Eight thousand, seventy-five hundred.
Right. It's, if you look at the map, the lot is tiny, and then there's this tiny little sliver, Laura, can you put that zoning thing back, the tax map back up? Right, so lot eight exists, both lots exist, they're not creating a new lot. So that lot is there, and there's that tiny little sliver on the one side of it that this lot fifteen is giving to it, so it's making it bigger, it will not ever be conforming. And if you say no, it will stay less than it is now, than they're proposing. This is probably easier for the boards to see, I have the survey up, so if you see this sixteen-foot sliver.
But even reducing the size of the house would not make it conform?
The lot is a lot, yeah.
The house is a lot.
Yep.
But if you could bring up the other image, I mean, it looks like.
It looks like it's the other lot.
Lots five, six, seven would be relatively.
This actually would be bigger than lots next to it, because lots next to it are fifty foot wide.
They're even less conforming.
This'll now be like, what, sixty-six feet wide, Chad?
Sixty-six.
So the lots immediately next to it are fifty foot wide.
So it's, it'll fit right in with there already.
Exactly.
It's just the house is better on those other lots, on five-bedroom houses, right?
I have no idea what they are, they may be.
Just to clarify one point about the septic question, so there is no existing septic on lot eight, so the new septic lot that's being proposed is just a new septic, there's no septic there now. There is an existing septic on lot fifteen, which would remain, because there's a house there now. Just wanted to clarify.
And just so the board's aware, aside from the relief in addition, sidewalk, there's relief being sought for sidewalk on this application, specifically for the Larrabee Boulevard frontage, so I just wanted to note that as well.
Is there sidewalk there now?
No.
Anybody else have questions for him?
Yeah, well, the relief for the sidewalk, Mrs. Bean, I thought all new stuff moving forward, we were gonna put sidewalks and stuff.
That's totally up to you guys, so they requested the waiver. If you guys say no, they have to put the sidewalk in.
I'm not comfortable with waiving. I know, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, because I mean, there's, it would just be, it would just be sidewalk there and nothing else.
The other thing I would.
I don't disagree with you, normally I would, but like, there's no other sidewalk.
The towns aren't gonna add a sidewalk.
No, they're not.
Isn't there a sidewalk fund they can donate to?
They have to pay, if you waive the sidewalk construction, they have to pay into the fund, and then the town can put the sidewalk elsewhere. Oh, it's a minor subdivision, I take, so they don't have to pay into the fund.
Okay.
But the other thing I would note is the driveway configuration, so if you see here, it was one of the comments we had, they have two driveways sort of servicing the one house, so there's, you know, there's not a lot of room. I'm not sure why you're proposing it like that.
That front entry and stairway was making it difficult to work with one.
And there's no garage.
There's no garage, but.
So can you explain, can you get into more of that, why it's making it difficult? Like, this is a tiny lot, I don't understand why you need two driveways.
Okay, so we're, basically, the septic drives the back, the required size of the septic requires where the back of the house is gonna be, the front of the house is such that we're asking that we're only twenty-five feet from the front lot line, and the way the applicant designed his house with the front door in the center and the stairwell coming straight down, there wasn't really enough room, the front of the car would virtually be at the base of the stairs, but I think he's going to work something out where he can rework the stairwell so that we can have just three continuous parking spaces along the front instead of a pair of two parking spaces.
We would ask as a condition of approval to work with your office to address that comment.
Okay, so minor subdivisions, though, should the board act affirmatively, they're reviewed in-house, so it should just be made a condition that the in-house engineer review the driveway configuration.
Okay.
I also think that, like, on this tiny little lot, because the architecture is what they want, is causing two driveways, I'm not seeing it, sorry. Figure it out, one driveway.
Understood.
Understood, yep.
Anybody else for him? Okay, let me bring up your next witness.
Thank you. Our next witness is Allison Coffin, the applicant's professional planner. Ask that she be sworn.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Allison Coffin, C O F F I N.
Could you please provide your credentials for the board?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've had my license and certification since two thousand and five. In the years since then, I've been accepted as an expert in front of boards in more than a hundred communities in the state, many, many times in Howell.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Ms. Coffin, I'll ask if you could identify the variance relief and provide the support for that variance relief.
Sure, there's variances associated with increasing the size of lot eight, where twenty thousand square feet is required, and after the subdivision, it'll be nine thousand nine hundred square feet, frontage of a hundred feet is required, and it's increasing from fifty to sixty-six. There's some existing variances on lot fifteen which aren't changing for a front yard and side yard setback, and an accessory setback. There's also variance relief that's being requested for front and side yard setback for new lot eight point oh one. It's a significantly undersized lot, and to develop it with an appropriate-sized house, we need a little wiggle room on the front yard and the side yard setback. There are also a waiver request for the sidewalks. The board may care to know that there are no public schools in Howell within two miles of this site, there is a parochial school in Lakewood under construction, but that's the only educational facilities that would be impacted by sidewalks being located on this property. The variances that are being requested are all bulk or C variances, there's two tests within the municipal land use law for these variances, the first is the C one standard, the hardship standard, and the second is the C two standard, and that's justified when the purposes of the municipal land use law are advanced by the variance and the benefits outweigh the detriments. It's my opinion that the board could use either of those standards to grant the relief being requested by this applicant. Looking first at the C one hardship standard, the subject's site is unique in its odd shape and has three frontages and two tax lots, and we look at it as a whole. The proposed subdivision is a corrective lot line adjustment, giving that sixteen-foot wide spur of land from lot fifteen out to Larrabee that appears to serve no logical purpose, transferring it to lot eight, which increases the size of that lot. The lot area relief for new lot eight point oh one is directly caused by the size and area of the existing parcels, as well as the location of existing structures on lot fifteen, that's not why we're not transferring more of lot fifteen to lot eight. There is enough land area for two twenty thousand square foot lots, the total parcel's over forty thousand square feet, but the presence and location of the structures on lot fifteen oh one, as well as the unusual shape of the lot, prevent an even subdivision of the land. Even without such structures, the resulting lots, if we were to have two twenty thousand square foot lots, would be absurdly shaped. Dividing the lots as proposed with a straight separation at the midpoint of the block depth in line with adjacent lot seven creates a cleaner subdivision, more in character with the rest of that block. The frontage relief for lot eight point oh one is required because that is the existing frontage when existing lot eight combines with the sixteen feet from lot fifteen, the resulting sixty-six feet is an improvement over the existing fifty feet for lot eight. And the front yard setback relief that the applicant's requiring for lot eight point oh one is because the development of this site with a single-family home requires a septic field, the placement of the septic field pushes the home towards the front of the lot into the required front yard. This proposed subdivision here can be granted under the C two standard in that it advances the purposes of the municipal land use law. Purpose A is to encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use or development of all lands in the manner of the state which will promote public health, safety, morals and general welfare, and purpose E, which is more important here, is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities and regions and preservation of the environment. Though one of the two new lots here is undersized, the overall density of the project is conforming and advances this purpose. There is no significant detriment associated with the requested variance relief here. There's no negative impact to the character of the area as the overall residential density proposed is appropriate and permitted, and though undersized for area and width, new lot eight point oh one is an improvement over existing lot eight, and the lot line adjustment eliminates the potential for a driveway accessing lot fifteen from Larrabee, which is not needed for that lot to function. There's no significant harm to light air and open space, and there's no significant traffic, noise, odors or other such impact that would result from the requested variances. Approval of these variances would not substantially impair your master planner development ordinance, the uses are permitted and proposed, permitted and appropriate, and the density is permitted and appropriate. So for those reasons, it's my opinion that the board is able to grant the variance relief that's being requested, it would have no detriment to the health, safety and general welfare of the public, and it wouldn't result in a substantial impairment to your master plan and development ordinance.
Thank you. That is the applicant's direct presentation, we'll open it to the board or the professionals if there's any comments or questions.
I don't take exception to the testimony at all, I think if they eliminate the one driveway, as we discussed previously, I have no issue. Normally, you know, I'm not one to advocate for an undersized lot. Here, we have an existing undersized lot that's being made bigger with this subdivision, though how they're dividing the line seems appropriate, I just don't see the need for two driveways. So I think if they put one driveway in, I don't take exception to the testimony that they've asked for.
Okay. Anybody from the board have anything?
Just from a basic standpoint, I think I agree with Ms. Bean, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Right, yeah.
So back to the five-bedroom house, does that, it has a full basement, Ms. Newman, or?
The basement is proposed unfinished.
And, okay, so unfinished basement?
Yes.
Regular windows, egress windows, but, I'm just thinking like the second driveway, maybe, you know, for people living in the basement, that, you have a parking and car there.
There would be no living space in the basement, and as placed on the record previously, we'll work with your office or the engineer to find a conforming driveway configuration with one entrance.
So, Mr. Pape, would you be okay with the condition of any approval of this board that the basement never be used for, like, a bedroom or any kind of occupancy in that way?
Correct, no bedrooms or occupancy in the basement.
That's fair enough.
Good.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have to be honest, if a person buys the home and owns the home and pays their property taxes, they should be able to use their basement however they see fit.
Unfortunately, that's not accurate, you have to have egress windows if you're gonna turn that into a basement.
Of course, I understand that, from an occupancy standpoint, from a safety standpoint, absolutely.
Yeah.
But I don't want my name attached to any deed restriction that's gonna tell a person how to use their home.
So if you turn the, if you turn the home into a seven-bedroom home, and you only have three parking spaces, now you're imposing issues on other people, I think.
A basement's still a basement in a five-bedroom home.
I agree, as long as it doesn't turn into a bedroom, I don't care how they use it.
By law, it'll never be a bedroom, but.
I just think it gives the township a little bit more oomph if there's a statement on the record as a condition that it will not be used as a bedroom. I understand what you're saying, because technically, they're not allowed to do that, right? But we have seen many instances where what they're allowed, what people are allowed to do and what they do do is not the same thing. Here, if we have an opportunity to say, it's a five-bedroom house with a basement, they're providing three parking spaces, and they're agreeing that the basement will not turn into a bedroom, it gives the township a little bit more.
Mr. Chair?
There's another reason as well. So when you're purchasing a home and your attorney is doing the closing and they're doing due diligence, you know, there's no notice of all of the requirements of the Uniform Construction Code, which is where the ingress and egress window requirements exist, they don't exist in our zoning ordinance, they exist in the UCC, there's no special notice of that to anybody, and a lot of people just wouldn't necessarily even begin to think that their basement would be restricted from a safety standpoint. However, if you place the restriction in a resolution, which is no more than, you know, putting a statement in which reflects what the law is. know, putting a statement in which reflects what the law is anyway, that's something that can be found by a prospective purchaser when they're doing due diligence, and they would be aware of what the restriction is, and, you know, make their decision on whether they wish to purchase the property or not. So I think there's a benefit, not simply to the town, but there's a benefit to the purchasers in understanding what the restrictions are without requiring them to have, you know, in-depth knowledge of the Uniform Construction Code.
Is that right? Because at the end of the day, we know people are going to do whatever they want.
Yeah, I was going to say, you can tell them not to, but if that's what they want to do, that's what they're going to do.
It's irrelevant, because then, you know, then it'll be a code enforcement thing, and then that's a whole thing. So whatever.
Yeah, that's fine. Anybody else? Okay. I'm going to open it to the public. If anybody from the public has any questions for the applicant, please come forward. Don't everybody rush up here? Well, all right. Seeing that there's none, going to close the public portion. I'll let you summarize.
Sure. I think it's a pretty straightforward application. We would just ask the board to vote favorably. Thank you.
With recommendations to approve?
Yes, correct.
Take a motion?
I will entertain a motion.
I'll make motion to approve with professionals.
I'll second.
Was that Mr. Mercer's second?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is second, Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Busser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the comments.
All righty, okay. One more left. Next up, and he's staying there, so. Case number SP 1114, Lowe's Companies, Inc. Where you going, bro? Yeah, this should be pretty quick.
That's better.
Yeah, it was nice. Yeah. Absolutely. It's an improvement.
Ready to proceed? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals. For the record, my name is Jared Pape. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Pileburn Pape. Our firm represents Lowe's Home Centers. We are here requesting amended preliminary and final site plan approval. And again, just before we begin, I'll ask if I can confirm that the notices that we provided are adequate to provide this board with jurisdiction.
They were adequate, thank you.
Thank you. Lowe's received their original approval some 20 years ago, at which time the resolution did not include a request for outdoor storage.
Thank you.
As I'm sure many are aware, Lowe's is a national company, and outdoor display and sale of products is standard procedure for them and, you know, competitors similar to them. Lowe's, or applicant, the applicant engaged in this type of activity, outdoor storage, for many, many years, and when it was brought to their attention that this activity required board approval, they immediately filed this application, and here we are. So we have a brief presentation with several witnesses. The applicant's professional engineer, Michelle, I might put her name, Briehoff, is going to provide her findings in a traffic study that her office prepared. Kevin Bolger, another of the applicant's engineers, is going to provide a description of the activity that's being, that Lowe's is requesting to take place with regard to outdoor storage. And lastly, Christine Cuffone is the applicant's professional planner. If there's no questions or comments at this time, I'll ask we move to the first witness.
Trudy?
Thanks.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Michelle, M.I.C.H.E.L.L.E., last name Briehoff, B.R.I.E.H.O., ethos and frame.
Could you please provide your credentials for the board?
Sure. I am a, the geographic discipline leader at Colliers Engineering and Design for Traffic Planning. I have been working as a traffic engineer since 2008. I have a degree in civil and environmental engineering from Northeastern University. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. I have appeared before this board before, and I also live in Howell. I have appeared in Freehold, other boards nearby, as well as dozens and dozens of other boards in New Jersey.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Your office prepared a parking study. Could you walk the board through the results of that parking study?
Sure, so I'm going to be extremely brief here. We did do a parking study. I did speak with somebody from the township. They had advised for us to do the parking study on a Saturday and Sunday, and we actually did that for two weekends. Those counts were done in June 2022. And what we found from that parking study is we counted the field that was closest to Lowe's, so that consisted of 558 spaces. And what we found is that the maximum demand during that count was 157 spaces. So, you know, obviously, there was a significant amount of vacant spaces. We also then took it a step further and looked at sales receipt data for the store, found out when the store's peaks are, applied a factor so we could again provide a more conservative estimate of what the maximum parking demand would be for the center. So when we took what we found and then applied that peaking factor, we found that the maximum demand would be about 209 spaces. Again, that would be out of the 558 spaces that were surveyed. So really, the crux of my testimony and my direct is that we have a significant number of vacant parking spaces within that field.
I ask that that testimony be placed on the record before Mr. Bolger describes the proposed activities. I thought it was important for the board to hear that this parking lot is vast and largely underutilized, so we wanted to place that testimony on the record.
Jared, if I can, I have a question, and I'm not sure if it's this witness, but I'm assuming you're handling site civil. So my office has posed a site distance issue on the exit to Route 9, and-
On the exit, okay.
I'd like that specifically addressed. I think it's a site safety issue. Are you the witness prepared?
I can discuss site distance. I am not, I didn't do any plans for this. That would be probably Kevin, but I'm happy to answer site distance if it's-
So my area of concern is specific at this driveway? As cars are exiting out to Route 9 to make the right to continue to go north?
Yep.
The visibility left is blocked because the area is bermed up in this area, and then there's landscaping to the top?
But just so I'm clear, is it the driveway that's directly on Route 9, or the driveway that's on Lanes Mill?
Driveway on Route 9.
Okay, okay.
So I would ask that, should the board act favorably, or should even not? Then a comment needs to go to the township. Quite frankly, it came to me through the Township Engineering Department to make sure that I brought it up this evening. But I have been out there, I do have photos, and what's happening is vehicles have to proceed past the stop bar in order to be able to obtain visibility to make the right on Route 9. So given the speed and given everything in that area, I would recommend that that area that is-
So it's adjacent to Shop, right?
No, it's adjacent to your garden center.
Oh, okay, so that's Lanes Mill. I'm sorry, that's why I was getting-
Oh, I am on Lanes Mill, sorry.
Okay, no, 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 I was, I'm in and out of the shopping center all the time, so I get there, so.
I'm looking down on the page, and I'm thinking I'm on Route 9.
No, you're on Lanes Mill.
It is Lanes Mill.
Okay.
And I've come that way every day, and it is a problem.
Yes, no, I understand, yes. I think we can agree-
So now that I've gotten the orientation correct.
Okay. I think what we can agree to do is make sure that the hedges and the vegetation are maintained within the site triangle easements.
I think you have to take it down, I mean-
They just get out, like, they're too big.
Yeah, I think we can agree to doing whatever we need to do within the site triangle.
Yeah, absolutely, make it a condition of approval, but like Ms. Newman said, beyond that, it's something we can immediately address, especially if it's a significant safety issue.
And none of your storage that's in this area is going to be of a height that would be of a concern?
No, and it's out of the site triangle easement, or the site triangles, I should say.
So just to be clear, my recommendation is that the area be regraded, and that the berm that's currently there be taken down, and that low-lying only vegetation be put in that area so that the driver's eye can clearly see.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for her?
Any other questions?
Can I just ask a simple question here?
Sure.
Maybe you'll speed up the process a bit. Hasn't this all been going on already?
That's what I was going to ask, too.
I was going to say-
Aren't they already storing there?
Right, I mean, there's mulch out there, tables out there.
For as long as I can remember.
As I mentioned.
Bread's there now, right? Everything's been going on.
On a seasonal basis, items are stored outside currently. Client receives violations, needed board approval.
Oh, okay, okay.
Code enforcement went out, and-
Got it, okay.
And as I mentioned, this outdoor storage was not addressed-
Exactly.
In the original approval some 20 years ago.
Got it, okay.
It just wasn't addressed.
Sure.
This is a paper, what Mrs. Newman is referring to, is not just vegetation, the berm-
Yes.
That was originally built years ago, has just had mulch put on top, the mulch put on top. The landlords of that plaza, they're all split up. Like Lowe's is one, Chick-fil-A is another, the way that whatever, you know, the maintenance there is not, you know, kept up that height every year, but the berm she's referring to is right to the right-hand side as you're pulling out.
Yep.
And a little, on the fence line, well, not the fence line, the tree line.
Yeah.
So because it is, you have to pull out far to see the side line.
Understood. Ms. Newman and I spoke about it earlier, and she was showing me photographs, and it's something we'll immediately address.
Okay, cool.
Michelle, are you the one that talks about the overall number of parking spaces?
I'm not going to, no, I'm going to leave that to Kevin, yeah.
Okay.
Just my testimony was really to talk about the vacancy of parking.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything for her?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks. Call our next witness, Kevin Bolger.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Kevin Bolger, last name B.U.L.G.P.R.
Mr. Bolger, could you please provide your credentials for the board?
Yes, good evening, members of the board. From a professional standpoint, I am a licensed planner and a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. I have a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers, bachelor's from Rutgers as well. My licenses are current and in good standing. By way of experience, I have worked directly for Lowe's for over 10 years, and I have since worked for them as a consultant for about 10 years, basically doing project management of this sort. I'm currently working on about 10 different applications like this throughout New Jersey, and I have testified before this board before for another major home improvement store a number of years ago.
Okay, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Mr. Bolger, could you identify or describe the outdoor storage that, activity that's being proposed?
Yes, absolutely. I know we've got lots of monitors up here, but for me to be able to point them, I brought my own board. Easy, if that's okay.
Yeah, just the board can't see that, so that's why we use this one.
Can I, should I stand before one of them?
Whatever you need to do. Is this something that was previously submitted?
Yeah, no, this is what you're seeing up there right now.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
I'll try to do it here, so.
Just here, you want to use this mic? So we can hear you, but you have to talk into it.
So upon the town telling Lowe's that they had some issues with the outdoor storage, we were asked to put together the best site plan possible to show exactly where the outdoor storage is and explain it, and seeking our approval. At the same time, over the course of a number of years, there've been a couple of other parking lot striping improvements that have been done, so we wanted to put them on the plan as well, and explain them as well. So we figured we will put everything on a plan so that the existing conditions that are out there now are on a plan that will be approved for the board. First and foremost, we have an area down here at the lower parking lot that is a seasonal area of storage for mulch, if you're familiar with the area. That becomes a customer pickup area for mulch. So you buy the mulch inside the garden center, inside the store, you bring your ticket out, you have a one-way drive-through here with your vehicle, and they load the mulch up there. And that's seasonal, and we do that basically just through the spring, through approximately Memorial Day through Fourth of July. Also down here along the garden center is an area where they have basically outdoor storage of different types of garden center products. Area 8 right here is a storage area for carts and so forth, whatever, from the garden center that get dropped off and picked up. Up here along the top, this is an area of storage for fence pallets, utility trailers, picnic tables, and so forth. So that's all of the different storage areas. This is a permanent storage area, this is a permanent storage area, this is a seasonal storage area, and then a couple of parking lot improvements. Right below the top storage area here, we have four angular, long parking spaces. Those are extra long, those are for basically contractors with trucks and trailers. If you don't have them there, contractors will park any which way possible, so this really controls that and also offers that type of service for a customer. If you're familiar with Lowe's, they really try to cater more towards the pro-customer these days, so that's one of the amenities that they offer for them. Underneath the lumber loading area, it was originally approved with two one-way lanes. That proved to be not work as efficiently as possible. What they've since done now is created one through lane and four angular parking spaces. Again, that's a national rollout, they're doing that through all their stores, as with the angular trailer park spacing. Additionally, they have a number of wider spaces that's for contractors as well that don't have trailers, but just have pickup trucks and vans. In the center of the site, we have customer pickup spaces with Lowe's. Online purchases, you can do that online. These spaces are reserved just for those customers, they park there, they walk in real quick, they pick up their product, and they go out and they leave. And I'll note that there is item four over here, that's where about four spaces are taken up with donation bins, those bins will be removed. They haven't been there yet, but they will be built, they will be removed. It's very difficult to get the people that have them to remove them. They're given a certain amount of notice, and if they don't, then they're automatically removed, whether they like them or not. And that pretty much summarizes the proposed parking lot improvements and the proposed storage areas.
Open it up to the board members or board professionals if there's any questions.
I guess the question I have is the one, the number one on your modifications key additions, it says proposed bag goods for seasonal sales area. I mean, here it is October, well, November now, November 2nd. There's sheds out there, right, for people to look at, potentially buy, I mean, is it really seasonal, or is it just year-round, there's going to be different goods out there? Just so you guys are covered, I guess, you know what I mean?
That area, number one, is just supposed to be seasonal. On the plan here, it says from March 1st to July 15th, and that is basically just for bag goods.
Okay, so what are they doing with the sheds out there now?
They shouldn't be there.
Got it.
So is there someone here from Lowe's that is hearing what the board is saying?
Up here.
And understanding that, like, that stuff needs to be removed?
No impact to them.
We don't have a Lowe's representative here. We'll make sure that message gets to them.
Can you clarify for me the number of parking spaces? Because your plans say one thing, we calculate another number. we calculate another number, and now you're taking up parking spaces, so I'm just curious, like, what is the number?
That's always a good question.
Thanks.
Especially when we put together plans like this, sometimes we don't have the benefit of the latest plans or survey. And I will mention that when we originally put together the plan, in the interim, the parking lot was repaved and restripped, so then I had to go back out and basically do a survey. So the calculations that we have here was what we had come up with sometimes, we're off by a little bit because there's cart corrals, sometimes people count the cart corrals, sometimes they don't, and a lot of times, cart corrals will move to different spaces or sometimes they'll eliminate them, so there's always a little bit of offset in the actual number. I think the testimony was given that there was more than enough spaces to accommodate what...
I want the number, like...
I would have to go with the number that's on my plan, that's...
Okay, so that's the problem that I'm having. So the plans indicate there are 737 parking spaces, but the provided parking study and executive summary indicates 725 spaces, but only 588 were analyzed, and I calculated, based on my counting them, 723. So you're the engineer, you're the one that's responsible for the plans, you can't give me the number?
So the difference between us and our parking study was the cart corrals. 10 were counted, whereas 10 were not counted.
So why were 588, why were only 588 analyzed when there's 737?
Oh, because what they failed to tell you is that they did a very, very conservative and practical parking study. They only did a parking study in the main area of the lot, because if, you'll see there's a remote area, I'll point it to you right here.
Where Chick-fil-A is?
So there is an area of parking that belongs to Lowe's up and through here that no Lowe's customers park there, and we didn't think it was practical to count that within our parking study. So we wanted to do a more conservative and a more practical parking study. So the parking study we did did not count these parking areas here, it only counted the parking areas here to justify we had enough parking in the actual practical parking lot. So we were trying to do a very conservative approach.
But you're asking to take away parking spaces for outdoor display and you did not, you cannot tell us how many parking spaces are in the parking lot, right?
If there's a discrepancy between our count and your count, then we will rectify that, remedy that.
I mean, I don't even know what to say. I mean, I've asked multiple times for the number, you can't give it to me, I'm gonna move on. I think why it's an issue, Mr. Chair, members of the board, is there's, it's a design waiver, right? So the, an existing home improvement store is parked at one space per 200 square feet. Based upon the area of the Lowe's building, 830 parking spaces would be required. We have that 652 are proposed, so I think it's important to know the number so we know the deviation.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask Mr. Pape a question. Mr. Pape, do you have any objection? Laura, your number is the fewest amount that anyone's counted?
Correct, and I believe that takes out the...
I have 659, what do you have?
652.
Do you have an objection to the board using the number 652, which is the fewest of all of the various counts? No.
No, we have no objection, and I'll just note that as Michelle discussed in her testimony, her study indicated that even at peak levels, and I'll have to ask her for the exact number, even at peak levels, this lot is well underutilized.
Yeah, that's why I was asking if you would go with the six...
So we're comfortable even with the lowest number that was addressed.
All right. So for purposes of this application, again, Laura, your number was 652?
652.
The board should consider 652 parking spaces, which is the fewest amount of spaces of all the calculations.
And the parking spaces are 18 feet in length?
Yes.
So that also needs relief, because our ordinance requires 19 feet in length. In addition, the angular stalls?
Yep.
Need relief, the angular stalls?
Well, was any of the dimensional relief part of the original approval?
No, they're creating that, that's new relief. So are we agreeing that it needs relief?
I think yes, it needs relief.
And it's the drive aisle width. Right, yes. So the board understands, it's the drive aisle width in here is only 12 feet. Showing it up on the screen.
Under the lumber canopy?
Yes.
Correct.
I guess I'll just go point by point to what I think hasn't been addressed in my review letter. So do you expect any outdoor sales or are all transactions taking place within the building?
Inside the building.
The sod staging canopy is 2A?
Yes.
And so we had asked for the setbacks, they'll be provided, as well as detail identifying height. Applicants shall also specify vehicles are intended to traverse beneath the canopy and if so, indicate clearance.
So there was a dimension added, 28 feet, 10 inches?
And the height?
The height is 10 feet at the perimeters and 15 feet at a peak, because it's a gable roof.
And the trailer, larger sized truck parking in area five? Have the maximum number of vehicles that can be anticipated there, and whether these are warranted, so what is their purpose?
I'm sorry, those four angular parkings?
The oversized angular parking.
That's the, as I explained, for the contractors with trucks and trailers, so they're extra-long vehicles?
And they're not picking up mulch or anything that's in the front of the store?
No.
Plant, description of the plant shipping cart racks in item eight, due to the proximity of the entrance drive? I think that's this area.
Right, that's just documenting the existing location of that activity.
And it also will not block any site distance?
No.
Any signage or pavement markings for the veteran and curbside pickup?
Yes, they're there, existing.
And the effective length of the parking spaces aren't changed at all by those sign posts?
No.
The proposed air pump?
Yes, there is an existing air pump on the plans, I forgot to mention that.
And how is it used?
Typically, a contractor will pull up if he needs air in his tires and fills up his tires and moves on.
Is the concern that it would block the entrance to the, that drive aisle in here?
There hasn't been any instances that we know of that happens. Contractor is there, he's there, he can move his vehicle at any given time. It's not a parked vehicle. Or it's a standing vehicle.
Right, but if he's there getting air in his tire, he's not gonna move the car to let somebody pass.
So, oh, correct.
Because he's patient or whatever to put the air in the tire.
So he puts the air in the tire and then he moves on.
And, but that could take a while and you could block the drive aisle, I think that's the concern.
That's a legitimate concern, there haven't been any complaints about that.
But we're not gonna just allow an issue to remain because you haven't got a complaint. If it's a, if it is a potential problem, here we are, let's fix it.
Understood. If it's a problem, there's complaints, you can...
No, I'm telling you, if, I'm telling you, it's a potential problem, so I'm asking you to come up with a solution to fix it now, not if there's a complaint, because the complaints are not gonna come back to this board. You're asking us to allow you to do something, and if there's a prospective problem on the site, we're gonna ask you to fix it here.
How would you know if there were complaints or not?
Through the store manager.
You have, the store manager has some obligation to report directly to you after the site's constructed, that there have been complaints about, you know, some particular aspect of the operations?
No, as part of, as part of my questions to the store manager when I take on this role and this particular task, I always go down and those are some of the, those are one of the questions I do ask the store manager.
But this is proposed, correct?
No, it's existing.
It says pro air pump.
Yes, it's existing.
In blue, that's not in black, so it looks new or proposed.
We, all we wanted to do in the blue is highlight the changes that we're seeking to document and to be approved.
So you have a pro air pump there without an approval?
Those are existing, yes.
So it didn't get approved there?
Everything on the plan here is existing.
So you're legalizing what's out in the field?
Correct.
You're familiar with the town's permit for outdoor display of goods?
Not sufficient.
I don't understand what you mean, not sufficient.
You're not sufficiently aware, or?
Not sufficiently aware, what I'm, my understanding is that we are documenting what's currently occurring on site as, I guess cited by a violation through the town, come in here and get approval for what?
That's not correct. The town requires a permit for outdoor display of goods, that's what this section is for.
If I could chime in, Lowe's understands there would be a permit process, as I mentioned, they've been issued violations for this activity, so we're here seeking the necessary approval to permit this outdoor storage activity as described by Mr. Bolger, and we understand there still would be a permit process before this activity takes place.
Any plan to put in EV parking spaces?
None.
Are you taking out, I've certainly requested that the landscaping along Lanes Mill Road, specifically at the drive aisle, be removed, but is there any other trees or landscaping to be removed?
Not that I'm aware of.
And stormwater management will remain unchanged with the proposed?
Correct.
And that's it, that's it, Mr. Chairman?
Anybody from the board have any questions?
This all has been going on for years, so instead of just coming here years ago and asking permission, they're just asking permission. Whatever, it is what it is. Hey Laura?
Yep.
You guys have been doing this crap for years. This parking lot all the time, all this stuff's been going on for years.
What is the, what is the number of spaces? I'm still confused about that.
You couldn't answer the question, we agreed to 652.
So what is 725 on the parking summary?
I don't know.
Are you counting the spaces that you're gonna take, that they're gonna take?
So the last plan we submitted, which is what I've got here, we calculated a total of 737 spaces that were approved, minus 10, plus they're occupied by cart corrals, that's where we got to the 727, and then when you eliminate spaces within certain storage areas, that brings it down to 719, that's the temporary, and then when you eliminate spaces from all of the permanent and temporary storage areas, it brings it down to 620, that's available on the Lowe's lot.
So we're less than 652.
And just to reiterate, as mentioned by Michelle, and maybe I'll ask her to give us...
I was just gonna say, what's the, on those two days, what was the maximum amount of spaces used?
So the maximum number that in her study for, they were there on weekends looking at peak usage was 209.
So 209 was capacity, like the most she found during that study?
Yeah.
Or 209 through the whole day? Or 209 at one time?
Yeah, it was actually less than 209, but they conservatively added to bump it up to 209. So they actually counted less than 209 as the peak, but conservatively added, I forget the percentage.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, okay, no, just trying to put a little perspective in it.
Yeah, so, just, yeah, for perspective, I understand there's a discrepancy that we should resolve, but whether it's in the sixes or sevens, you can tell it's still massively underutilized and there's a lot of...
Respectfully though, Jared, it's relief, so we should know what the number is. I mean, it's not like, well, it's okay, I understand that there's a parking study that's talking about a peak demand. Our ordinance has a standard, so are we now saying that there's 620? I just wanna have a number.
Right, we asked for it, you didn't know it, we said initially we were gonna take Laura's number because it was the lowest number, now we're 30 spaces lower than that, and I'm not, I'm honestly not confident that that's true. So like, I just, I just feel like, honestly...
Mr. Chairman, I think that we may just need to carry the application so that the applicant...
Can get the number.
I can take five or 10 minutes.
To use Mr. Lieberman's words, something about ducks. There're ducks in a row.
Oh, Mr. Pape, just one more thing about the bag goods, meaning only mulch, or you talked about stone too?
Yeah, bag goods can be other items as well, but the vast, vast majority, what happens out here is the mulch.
But I think what he's asking is what else?
If that's the vast majority, what is the limited minority?
So we can testify this will be just mulch.
So it'll be just mulch, won't be soil, won't be...
Just mulch.
Stones, like different, just mulch.
Because my concern is with the mulch is being dyed, red, brown, white, natural doesn't matter.
Runoff, yeah, when it rains, yeah.
It's runoff, that's what I was gonna ask you, Laura, and even Mr., you know, who's our runoff from the dyes with the rain, with open bags and stuff, I would like to have in writing that Lowe's employees will be directed by the manager that open bags and there will be no, no loose material in the parking lot. And a lot, listen, I understand they're running an operation, but if we, if our code enforcement pulls in there and there's just open bags everywhere and there's mulch in the parking lot, we're not gonna be happy with that because that's runoff into the sewer system, correct?
Agreed.
So can we please, Mr. Pape, add that?
Yeah, I'll make a note of it and I...
They're saying only mulch.
I mean, I would recommend you probably wanna talk to someone from Lowe's because these guys live here, they're gonna be out there on a regular basis, so if it's stone, then it's gonna become a problem.
There's just a lot of questions, maybe, yeah, if you...
Talking all sorts of stuff that can block up the sewer system that's going out.
Yeah, there's, there's just a lot of questions, so maybe it'd be a good idea to speak to somebody from Lowe's or from operations that can at least, you know, definitively give us that information, and can we please figure out how many parking spots?
Sure, so it sounds like we need to get this information and come back with this information as to what's exactly in the bag, because, and just so I'm clear on the parking issue, so Mr. Bolger, your office prepared the plan which identifies one number, and am I correct, Ms. Beam and Ms. Newman, you have calculated different numbers?
Let me tell you, we've heard, your witness, I think, your side has provided, I think, three numbers.
Yeah, we've heard 737, 727, 65, 620.
659, 652.
Like, you know, it was...
Well, it's not different numbers, what I've done is I've calculated...
They're different numbers.
No, no, but they're different numbers, like, if you said, like, 710, and they said 708, but now, I mean, we're on...
I got mad with really a 95, they didn't buy it.
Well, our goal and intention was to get to the baseline number and show you how we got to the baseline.
I don't disagree, but you started at 737 and ended at 620, that's, you know, that's 100 spaces.
Mr. Pape, I mean, is this really, does your client really wanna continue arguing the point as to whether there's a discrepancy?
We will clarify the number and I think, more importantly, or equally as importantly, how we arrived at that number. There's obviously, you know, he mentioned the...
Here's how I suggest arriving at the number. Someone goes out there and counts.
Right, but there's...
And you don't count the corrals.
We'll clarify the...
Mr. Pape, you're in front of us all the time, just get the stuff we want done, you know we're diligent up here, we're professionals, that's all I'm interested in, just don't be rude.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman, as a courtesy, I would recommend that Lowe's... Mr. Chairman, as a courtesy, I would recommend that Lowe's, I'm assuming they own the property, I would like that site triangle cleared immediately.
Yeah, okay.
Like, before coming.
Right.
I just want to say for the record, when I issued this report, I issued, I know that the board does not see that electronically, but as part of Eileen's record, I specifically noted it, I included pictures, and I asked that it be addressed prior to the public hearing, because to me, it's a safety issue.
And the sheds.
The sheds too, yes.
So it should be done before you come back.
Is that why code enforcement was called out there for sightline?
No.
No, I believe code enforcement was called out for the outdoor storage.
For all the outdoor display stuff.
All the stuff they've been doing for 20 years that.
Yeah, what happened in the winter, there was all, is this stuff going to be, all that's going to be moved in under canopy?
The outdoor storage product?
Yeah.
So the temporary seasonal, it's gone. And I was out there today, and there was maybe only a couple pellets there, but they shouldn't have been there.
So I guess, you know, before we even, at this point, let's get them a date, let's carry it, and we'll go from there. Mr. Chairman, what they have left is essentially just explaining the parking situation, taking care of some of the onsite conditions before coming back. Was there anything else, guys? Some of the operations, if, whatever, like, if they can speak, Lowe's can provide us with. Yeah, some better definition as to what the contents of the bags are going to be, and they have their planning testimony to put on. I don't think it's very long. You know, I don't know what, we have Wadsworth, and what are the other four? We have about 4,000 applications on December 14th.
K-Mex, 391 Oak Blend, J A B E Howell, Augustine Kim, Quonkham Holdings, Wadsworth, and D R Horton. D R Horton. They just want a date, so.
So I would say, Mr. Chairman, you know, Wadsworth, we need to get finished because that's a court settlement. This has very limited time, and the others haven't even started yet.
Right, and the others have time before they're expired.
Yeah, so I would recommend carrying them to the December meeting.
Okay.
Neither can I.
Well, then we got to carry you for scheduling purposes to New York.
I can have Justin here. Justin?
I can't be here.
We can look to the January meeting if that, and we can grant the necessary extension.
What, January meeting, what's the date?
Fourth. That's just going to be for scheduling. That'll just be for scheduling. Because we haven't adopted our 2024 calendar yet.
So it would be the subsequent meeting?
Yeah. So the application of Lowe's Companies Incorporated, S P-1114, be carried to the board's January 4th, 2024 meeting. It is a live meeting beginning seven o'clock here in the main meeting room at Town Hall. It will be for scheduling purposes only, there'll be no testimony, there'll be no further notice to property owners.
Very good.
You want to give an extension time through the end of January?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we can provide that in writing as well. And just to be sure, I'll read my notes back to make sure I have it right. We're, we'll immediately address the site triangle concern, as well as the sheds and anything that's on the site that shouldn't be there. We'll clarify the bag storage items, what's included, and confirm that there's no loose items, and of course, we'll confirm the number of parking spaces.
Perfect.
Okay.
All righty.
Thank you very much.
You have a good night.
Not just loose, we want to know if it's just bag mulch.
Right, yeah, what's in the bag items.
Yeah.
It's going to be bagged, or bagged topside, whatever, right?
Yeah, yep.
Understood.
Yeah, and Jared, just another thing, the definition of seasonal on that area in the front on Lanes Pond, because I swear to God, I'm starting to just get recollections here, like, Christmas trees and other type of stuff. Like, there's a lot that goes on in that area over the course of January to December.
Okay, we'll clarify the timeframes.
Yeah, so is it seasonal or?
Seasonal with the. Is it just always, and we just change the season?
Correct.
But again, that's, that's fine, as long as we.
I agree. I'm not saying they're any positive, but we just need to understand.
And then they still have to get the permission and township to do whatever they got to do anyways.
And then Christmas trees, and then.
Barbecues.
Easter cactuses, and then barbecues.
Exactly.
And it's like, is it always going to be an outdoor display?
Yeah, you might want to, that's, yeah, really, you guys, that whole number about from spring to July, what did you guys say, July?
First.
The spring, yeah, the springtime, right.
You're saying people will buy mulch every July first?
We'll be comprehensive in our response, and like, like I said at the outset, we.
Maybe just on bulk. Yeah, probably just not in bulk.
We want to be sure that there's no future violation, so we want a comprehensive resolution.
Because now you're on our radar.
Understood.
Yeah, we're easy like that. So I'm going to assume there's zero reason for, to go into executive tonight? No, Mr. Chairman, there's not. And we're done with master plan until the end of this year?
Yes.
So with that being, you're canceling everything? And when they want a reason, because they like a reason, just put down because I said so.
Which brings me to, on here, we always had it that they were at 7:00 PM, so I want to just, like, when you look at the dates, give me back that information.
Yeah, and master plan will forever be on Zoom too.
Yeah.
All right, with that, motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Night.
Thank you.